Let's please come to order. Today's date is February 14, 2013. Happy Valentine's Day. This evening, I'd like to ask Ken to give us the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will do the invocation. Ken Martin, our President.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America's citizens, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry for the delay. But maybe we all need to pray a little longer today, anyway. All right. First, let me say thank you on the behalf of all of us who are gathered here today. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to worship God as you believe. Thank you, God. In scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for the various levels of city officials and in particular, for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give us an assurance of what would please you, what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Macedonia. A special blessing goes out to our Fire Chief, Tim Black's son, who is currently leaving for Afghanistan, and to all those men and women serving our country. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen. All right, next on the agenda. Josephine, could you -- I never did get a roll call. Could you give me one, please?
Sure. Mr. Barker?
Here.
Ms. Darrow?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Mulner?
Here.
Very good. We have minutes. We have minutes on the January 24 meeting, 2013.
I'd like to accept the minutes as presented by the Council Clerk of January 24, 2013.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, we're moving right along into comments by the public. Comments by the public, we ask you to please come forward, use the microphone at the front, state your name and address, and you have to sign in prior to coming up. So this evening, we have Teri Hudak. Teri, come on down.
I have written a letter pertaining to Mayor Long, and I would like to read it, please. Mayor William Long, being the first mayor of Macedonia, was a very honest and truthful person. He gave his own money and had East Ohio gas and Cleveland water brought into Macedonia for the residents who were tired of heating their homes with oil and a pump inside their house to get water before our other townships had. I know I lived out here, and when I first moved out here, this is what I had. Mayor Long gave Macedonia his land in his will. That's how much he loved Macedonia. The last time he ran for mayor, he had younger men running against him, and he won being mayor again in his 90s. I knew Mayor Long and visited him in a manor house. I lived in Macedonia going on 45 years. We should never think of destroying the mayor's house. We should have fundraisers to pay for any repairs needed. After all, Mayor Long gave of himself to make Macedonia what a great city it has become. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri. Next is Sylvia Hanigan.
This is a follow-up on ordinance 10 because there was some discussion last council meeting on this, and I wanted to know if there had been changes to it. I just did a quick scan of the ordinance 10, and it still appears that, at least according to the language under subsection 3 under videotaping, that would authorize audio but not videotaping of work sessions since that is not consistent with Ohio Open Meetings Act and the training that I received on it either by the Attorney General's office. I have to say that I think that that particular section needs to be modified. So I'm just -- that's an update because there was some confusion last time as to whether or not that statement was in there. It is in there still. So I just wanted to make that comment, and thank you very much.
Could you address that issue for us?
Counsel can amend it on the floor at any time they so choose. As of now, I've not been asked to amend it, or no motion's been made.
Well, I think Ms. Hanigan is suggesting that the ordinance is in conflict with --
Oh, no, we researched it. Did I come? No conflict. You can't just outlaw it altogether, but you can regulate it. So my suggestion for some amendments --
Mr. Engel, we're going to have -- I had pointed out when this ordinance was proposed last council meeting and just in our work session that we're going to take some time to review these ordinances, discuss them, because Constable Madero had brought up the fact that we need more work session time to discuss these ordinances more fully. And the point was is that one of the ordinances that we have to take a look at was the videotaping. We're going to take a look at that. We also have another ordinance here for scavenging, but it's premature for you to jump to the conclusion, especially when we're only doing the second reading tonight.
I'm not jumping to the conclusion. I'm asking questions, Mr. Martin. Is that not allowed? Is it not allowed? It is allowed, so why can't I ask the Law Director some questions?
Mr. Engel, it's not a matter of asking questions. It's really a matter of we're going to review these ordinances during work sessions, and I'd like to give the public an opportunity to speak.
I agree with that. But unfortunately, or fortunately for Mr. Deemer, sometimes he's not at work sessions. So I thought it was within my proper bounds to ask him questions now. Now that you're President, if you're saying that's not, then I suppose we'll change things.
Mr. Engel, I'm very sorry that you misunderstood that, but please don't put words into my mouth.
Well, I think I have a right to ask some questions. Do I not?
This would be a good time to ask those questions.
I'm trying to. Mr. Deemer, I'm sorry if I have upset you. My -- I'm not upset with you. All I'm trying to find out is there's been an accusation that the ordinance as written does not comply with Ohio law. I don't suggest that you have written an improper ordinance. I believe you probably have because I consider you an expert on this area.
Yes.
I was just trying to get some clarification. I am not pushing the wagon to the left or to the right. I just want to know the facts.
Yeah, well, as you know, in law, everything, there's one court that would say one thing, other courts would say another. So this is a new area within the area of the Sunshine Law. There is no case outlawing the outright prohibition of videotaping. You can't do that. The better way might be to regulate it. And I have talked with the news media who have concerns about maybe doing this kind of thing themselves. And they are open for regulation as opposed to prohibition. Everyone's allowed to have audio. The video really is not something depriving the public of information.
Sure.
They're getting the same information by audio. What more information can there be by video? It's just a matter of preference, I suppose. So I did send some emails to the President saying there is some concern about this. Let's maybe talk about it and discuss options. And I think that's what Mr. Martin was saying, that there is some other language options we could use.
But, okay. That's all -- I just wanted you to address the accusations by Ms. Hanigan because I was concerned.
It's not a violation of law until it's adopted. My opinion is it's okay the way it is. But do you want to avoid that kind of fight by accommodating those who want to do video? I think that's the prudent thing to do, so we should discuss that.
Mr. Mayor, can you pass that down to Mr. Engel? It's on videotaping, Ohio Sunshine Law. I -- since the ordinance is in front of us, I went to the Ohio Attorney General and put that out, and it's on videotaping. You can have that. Okay, I have another copy.
Thank you.
If you could send us a copy, the Law Department would like to see it, too.
Okay.
Can I put something on the table here? I've thought about this at great length. And in my opinion, the work session, I don't want to say it's irrelevant, but we should be having these conversations out here, anyway. So why even have that? I mean, if we're going to discuss things, it should be out here in the public so everyone can see and hear everything we're going to talk about. I mean, really, the only thing we need to do in there is identify who's going to take what ordinance and what reading we're going to go with. So if we want to be transparent, we want to have it videotaped, audiotaped, let's all do it out here. We can eliminate that altogether.
A few years back, that was brought to us. I think it may have been my first or second year on council, and we voted to continue to do it in there because we thought we'd get more --
Complicated.
Yeah, better speaking in there. But I tend to agree with you that if we could maybe set up some different -- I mean, these walls and tables come down. We get to sit down there and do it. And I don't have a problem with it being recorded with the cameras that we have here than everybody could see it on Cable 9. I mean, it's certainly got merit to discuss it.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is anything we say in there should be said out here. So what is the purpose of having that in there when it's just us and limited to 34 people that can be inside the room? We could do it here for everyone to hear and see everything, and we're transparent.
Is it 34?
34.
Do most cities have only public meetings? Or do most cities -- and I know you represent numerous cities -- do they also have work sessions like this?
Yeah, they all have work sessions. And sometimes they're on alternate weeks. Sometimes they're before the meetings, such as you have them. And then it varies from community to community. Some do it in the actual council chambers because they don't have a nice conference room like that. So it's really up to you as a counsel how you want to do it.
In the municipalities that you are familiar with, whether as Law Director or just, you know, maybe appearing at meetings as a private attorney representing people, do -- are you aware of whether or not any of the other cities now provide video versus audio taping or --
Actually, there's not as many people that are videotaping as you might think. The bigger cities do, but the smaller ones do not. They don't put it on cable, and they --
Sure. But I wasn't necessarily suggesting that the city would be doing it, but allow taping video or audio otherwise in the work session.
I don't have any other community that regulates it.
So they allow it if they want it, or they allow it if they don't?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Hanigan.
Of course, other cities don't have people doing it and interrupting others in the audience and whatever might be going on. If they experienced it, maybe they would.
Nobody has.
Most laws come with us.
Exactly.
One of the benefits of having it taped by the city is it cannot be edited. And I've had people say, "Well, I saw a tape, and that part you're talking about wasn't in there." Our tapes here are not edited. You see everything from beginning to end. So Nick, that's a valid point to just have our discussions out here. Yet, there is some merit to sitting across the table and talking rather than like we are here. So I think Shane's idea about the table is good.
Yeah, it's difficult. I'd much rather be sitting across from you when we start yelling at each other.
Yeah.
The exchange between Mr. Martin and Mr. Engel would not have been the same if it was an audiotape only. There is a dramatic difference between hearing a book on tape and watching a movie. The interaction between the audience and us, how we look and how we talk, it does convey a message to those people watching it. And we have had some system failures recently with our videotaping. I don't have a problem with it. I'll go with the flow. And if the Law Director advises that we get some rules, I'm sure that's probably not a bad idea.
Well, what I was just trying to point out is the fact that this legislation is going to be significantly changed before it's ultimately voted on because I had several discussions with Mr. Deemer about the changes to make. We just have not had the time to discuss them yet because we've been working on the budget and dealing with other items.
This is another case where you both were right.
Well, the whole thing is it's premature to pick on a piece of legislation and say this is incorrect until you actually see the final product.
No one's picking on the legislation. We're asking questions, Mr. Martin.
All right. Moving on with public comments. Next on the list is Tina Hanna.
Happy Valentine's Day. I live on Sioux Lane in Macedonia, and I've lived here for 35 years. The reason for me getting up here is that -- and I don't want to comment for Mr. Martin. I'm sorry. I don't like to have any interaction with you. So this is just a statement that I'm going to make. Public records requests. I've heard people, especially certain council members, treat the action as like you're a communist because you want to have a document that you're willing to pay for and that you're allowed to have by law. And to be -- when you request something that is of interest to you, it may not be of any interest to anybody else, and I really don't care. You may not know why I want it, and I really don't care. You may not think it's relevant, and I still don't care. But when I want a public document that I'm entitled to have and I pay for, I don't like feeling like I'm doing a criminal thing because somebody can't understand why I would want it. It's really irrelevant to me and anybody else. It should be -- you should be standing up saying, "You're right, you've got the right to ask for it." Okay? And it's not causing tens of thousands of dollars' worth of wasted finances for me to ask for a few pages or 100 pages. It's my right, and I don't care what any of you think about it, whether you like it or whether you don't, and whether you think it's for a purpose or it's not your business. So I'm really aggravated time and time and time and time. I've heard this about people asking for public records, and we're the bad guys. I don't really care what you think, but I would appreciate you stopping to think that that's our right to do that. If you don't want us to have the right, maybe we should be asking why? Why don't you want the work sessions videotaped? Are you hiding something? And I'm tired of Mr. Miller wanting to speak and a certain councilman saying, "Meeting adjourned." Well, what did he have to say? I wanted to know what it was. And why shouldn't Mr. Engel ask questions before emergency things are passed? He should know what's going on. And I just am really getting sick of this. It's not your business what I want. If it's legal, then it's done professionally, which I've done. It's not your business, and I really don't need your opinion on why I want it or why I don't. Thank you.
Moving on into pending and/or new legislation, we'll start this evening with ordinance number 5-2013. It's Ken.
I'd like to hold ordinance number 5, 2013 at its second reading.
I need a second.
Second.
Sorry, Josephine.
An ordinance amending the Macedonia Recreation Membership Fee for improvement and maintenance of equipment.
Moving on to ordinance number 6-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 6, 2013 for its third reading by title only.
An ordinance amending the Business Regulation Code by adding new chapter 794 entitled Hotel and Motel Security and Safety.
And what's your pleasure?
Mayor, if I may, before we go there, we -- this had actually failed last year. I had brought it back because I felt it was relevant and something that we needed to do. The change that was made there, we took out the word "operators" and put the liability on the owners. So if there's a hotel or motel that's harboring prostitution and it continues, that's kind of what we're targeting here. So that was the intent behind the legislation.
What's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post, according to law, ordinance 6, 213.
Roll call.
I do need a second, sir.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. -- Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 6, 2013 passes. Ordinance number 9-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 9, 2013 for its second reading by title only.
An ordinance authorizing directing the advertisement for bids for an electronic fingerprint time clock for use by the city employees and creating section 164041 to the codified ordinances relating to the use thereof.
Moving on to ordinance number 10-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 10, 2013 for its second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending section 12102 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Macedonia adopting rules and regulations for the videotaping of council meetings.
Moving on to ordinance number 11-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 11, 2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
An ordinance confirming the final appointment by the mayor of Nicholas Abel to the position of full-time police officer.
John, a few words about Nick, please.
Nick's doing a fine job. He came to us from Lake County. Doing a great job. He'll be on day shift starting Sunday.
Very good. What's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance 2013, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ordinance 11, 2013 passes. Please welcome Nick to our family. All right, we'll move right on with another police appointment, ordinance number 12, 2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 12, 2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
An ordinance confirming the appointment by the mayor of Clara Simko to the position of full-time dispatcher.
John?
Yes.
Please.
Clara is here, Mayor.
Okay.
Clara comes to us from -- she's a dispatcher for the Metro Parks. And she's got some experience there. She was in the Air Force and amongst other things. So she's got a very interesting background that I'm not going to go into, but she is here, Mayor.
Wow. Well, I'll tell you what. This is really, really a tough job, and it takes a very special person to do it. So what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance number 12, 2013, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ordinance 12, 2013 passes. Welcome, Clara. You want to stand up and tell us who you're with? This is your chance.
This is my husband, Mark.
Hi, Mark.
Hello. Good to meet you, everybody. And I'm looking forward to serving the City of Macedonia.
Very, very good. Thank you, yes, absolutely. Ordinance number 13-2013.
Oh, it is? Okay, that's right. I would like to offer ordinance number 13, 2000 -- I mean, wait. I would like to offer ordinance number 13, 2013 for its first reading by title only. It's a tongue twister.
An ordinance establishing the full-time position of administrative assistant, senior coordinator within the fire department and establishing compensation therefor.
Moving on, ordinance number 14-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 14 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
An emergency ordinance amending ordinance 47, 2012, and as amended, making certain transfers between accounts with no financial impact on the city.
And what's your pleasure?
Before we go on, Scott, could you explain this to the residents who are here and also who may be watching on the television?
Yes, sir. This is merely reallocating the legal retainer or moving some funds around to reflect the added responsibilities to the Assistant Law Director that he's doing increased work on a HR department.
And it's not an increase in the budget in any way?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, with that, I'd make a motion that we pass and post ordinance 14, 2003, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Ordinance number --
One more, sir. Mr. Miller -- Mr. Mulner.
I guess my vote doesn't count. Yes.
Sorry about that. I just needed a minute.
Mr. Mulner, your vote was only running up the score. That's why she was going to not call you.
I needed a minute. Just needed a minute.
Yeah, there's a mercy roll.
Ordinance number 14, 2013 passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we have ordinance number 15, 2013, correct?
Yes, that's next. Ordinance number 15-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 15, 2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
An ordinance authorizing the city engineer to prepare plans, bids, and specifications and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids to enter into a contract for the roadway and construction improvement to South Bedford from East Highland to 600 feet south of Bedford Court.
All right. Before we go into the final vote on this, All right, uh, before we go into the final vote on this, um, this was something that we had money to do in the transportation bill, but the transportation bill passed and we didn't get the money. This is something we're talking about doing that's outside of our normal budget. Um, the only reason we're doing that is for the fact that the Highland Road Bridge is doing very well. The Highland Road Bridge might even be done ahead of time. If this were to happen, this opens a window, a window of time to which we can go and fix that road while the kids are not in school. Also forthcoming are, is going to be legislation regarding and encouraging our students to walk to school or ride a bike. We're talking about sidewalks next. Uh, Joe Clark, the, the superintendent of schools, has been in touch with my office. They would very much like to see this happen. Um, this is something that we have this window that unexpectedly opened, and if we go right now and move forward, we'll be maybe able to get a better bid because of the time of year. Most, at this time of year, most people are looking for work, and when you're looking for work, the bids come in even better. So with that, what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance fifteen two thousand thirteen.
Second. Roll call.
Mister Barker?
Yes.
Mister Daryl?
Yes.
Mister Engel?
Yes.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Mister Miller?
Yes.
Mister Mulner?
Before I vote, I wanted to point out something very important. Scott, we talked about this in the work session. Budgetarily, does this have an impact on where we stand?
No, we knew we can allocate about three hundred eighty thousand for capital, and also there's some motor vehicle license plate tax that's held an escrow account from the county, and we can tap into that because it's a thoroughfare street.
But, but also, this is only to go out for bids, we're not buying the project now, so...
Absolutely, this is, uh, as our engineer stated, probably wouldn't exceed more than fifteen thousand for his engineering plan.
Hello, Mister Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to, uh, thank you and Mister Mulner for bringing this issue forward and getting this legislation passed, because South Bedford Road needs a lot of work, we all know that, and, uh, essentially it was through your efforts and Mister Mulner's effort that this legislation tonight was introduced, and this is going to be of a great benefit to the community. So, I think everyone on council is very grateful, and I think the residents are going to be very, very grateful that we acted. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. My vote's yes.
All right, ordinance number fifteen dash two thousand thirteen passes, and this ordinance has a special significance to me. This council and this administration will have an, on its record that we have fixed every major arterial road that runs north and south, some portion of it, and every single east-west arterial road. I think that's a milestone, and I thank council very much for moving forward with this. Moving on to ordinance sixteen dash two thousand thirteen.
Uh, Mister Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number sixteen two thousand thirteen for its, um, first reading by title only.
In ordinance enacting, uh, chapter seven eighty-two of the codified ordinances to provide for the lights, licensing and regulation of scavengers.
Mister Mayor, I just want to point out that, um, the purpose of this ordinance, there's a lot of pickers who go through our community, and they go through rubbish, trash, what some people call garbage, and, um, what this does is, the people who perform these, uh, activities, they're going to be licensed by the city, they're going to have to pay a fee of fifteen dollars, and the city will be able to easily monitor these folks. There've been complaints in the past about some of their activities, there's been criminal activities connected with these people, as well as, um, identity theft. Um, when you grab a person's garbage, some people don't always shred, they may have credit card statements, and there are other pertinent information that can be used, uh, in ways that are, uh, illegal. I'd want to point out again, for the benefit of everybody here, this ordinance is going to be read and reread and revised and changed. This is not set in stone, this is only a first reading, and we'll be discussing it at subsequent work sessions, so if anyone sees something in here that they're not comfortable with, they could certainly attend a work session or attend a council meeting and bring it up and, uh, discuss it. But, uh, more likely they're not after council recess, I'm sure there's going to be some good suggestions.
Thanks, Ken. All right, moving on to, uh, ordinance number seventeen dash two thousand thirteen.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number seventeen two thousand and thirteen for first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
In ordinance extending for an additional one-year period, the one-year license granted to the Longwood Manor Historical Society pursuant to Macedonia ordinance eleven twenty-twelve.
And what's your pleasure?
Dave?
I've moved that we pass and post ordinance seventeen two thousand thirteen according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mister Barker?
Yes.
Mister Daryl?
Yes.
Mister Engel?
Yes.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Mister Miller?
No.
Mister Mulner?
Just one question before I vote. I thought we were making this for a year and a half.
That's what we discussed, but then when the legislation came, it was for one year. If you want to make a, amended, I suppose we could do that.
I'll make that amendment to change this to, uh, a year and a half.
Can we do that at this point, Mister Deemer?
Sure.
I'll second the motion.
You said, if you...
Need a roll call on the motion?
Yeah, I just, uh, was there a, uh, a conclusion date for the twelve months? Because I just, did you want to put a concluding date or just, uh, wait?
It's just from the first day of March two thousand twelve, expiring.
Actually, it's got February, February twenty thirteen. We've got twenty-eighth day of February twenty fourteen, so you want to make it August thirtieth twenty fourteen?
I have a calendar. Do you want to put a date in there instead of saying like, so that there's an actual date, like?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that, let's do that.
Six months later would be the end of August.
All right, I've got it, I've got it right here. You want to say August thirty-first, sir?
Correct.
Okay, you can do that. And Mister Engel, was this, um, the second? Mister Barker?
No.
Mister Daryl?
Yes.
Mister Engel?
Yes.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Mister Miller?
No.
Mister Mulner?
Yes.
Okay, so that...
Port two?
Yeah, um, and so...
On the amendment, so it's amended now, another motion to adopt as amended.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the amendment as amended.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Do you want to do a roll call, because now you're going through adoption, sir?
Yes.
Now we're going through adopting it as amended.
Roll call.
Mister Barker?
Yes.
Mister Daryl?
Yes.
Mister Engel?
Yes.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Mister Miller?
No.
Mister Mulner?
Keep up the good work, yes.
Well, it's very interesting that the mayor went through the trouble of conducting a survey, and nobody even asked what the outcome of the survey was, and your constituents voted three to one not to do this, and to go ahead and take down the house. It's also very interesting that out of a city of eleven thousand one hundred and thirty-eight people, only two hundred or less give a damn. It's also very interesting that the historical society of Northfield Center today is collapsing because nobody gives a damn, and yet, we extend something that could and was voted on by some people perhaps because they feared a wakeboard lake might be coming. And the young men who are putting together this project have come up with the version where the manor house isn't touched. However, I can understand why Mister Miller said no, because he wants that swimming pool. He wants that place for us to have outdoor swimming. He said it once, he's said it a thousand times. By not taking down the manor house, we are not going to have that outdoor pool. The other drawing, the way it was showed the first time, if the manor house was down, the pool would be there. So we've just made a decision with nobody asking the mayor, how'd that survey come out? What happened? I've got it right here. Three to, three to one. Do you think the manor house restoration should be undertaken and funded by taxpayers? Do you feel the manor house restoration is a high priority overriding capital improvements such as street road improvements and additional personnel staffing? Would you be willing to vote for an additional tax levy for the restoration and continued upkeep of the maintenance of the manor house? Would you be willing to make a personal private donation towards the restoration, maintenance, and repair of the manor house? Every one of those questions was three to one. No. And yet, we voted today, not we, not all of us, but we voted to extend something that's been going on for twenty-nine years. Should something have been done about this house? Absolutely. When it was given to the city, that's when you wanted to make plans and take care of it. But the house is in total disrepair, condemned, and nothing has been done that would change the condemnation of that house. Would you prefer the manor house be demolished according to law because we're breaking the law by keeping a condemned building up and the land dedicated to other recreational park uses? Two to one? Moving on. Ordinance number eighteen two thousand thirteen.
I'd like to offer resolution eighteen two thousand thirteen for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to file on behalf of the city of Macedonia an application to the Summit Akron Soil Waste Management Authority, the authority for a community reencycling, recycle, recycling access grant. Wasn't coming out very well. Recycling, I got, grant.
All right, what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, resolution eighteen two thousand thirteen. Second.
Roll call.
Mister Barker?
Yes.
Mister Daryl?
Yes.
Mister Engel?
Yes.
Mister Martin?
Yes.
Mister Miller?
Yes.
Mister Mulner?
Yes.
Resolution number eighteen two thousand thirteen passes. Are there any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none. Correspondents from the clerk?
I have none, Your Honor.
Moving on to the mayor reports, just some facts for you concerning deer in Macedonia. There were thirty-three car versus deer crashes in two thousand twelve. There were thirteen more deer injured and six that had to be dispatched by officers. There were eleven more that were found dead near the roadways, and there was one deer stuck in the swimming pool. That means there were fifty-eight problems with deer and people calling the same place home. We have many, many of these big creatures around our homes. To try and control the herd, Macedonia allows controlled crossbow hunting, and this year nineteen deer were harvested. It is possible that by taking on culling years ago, we have some means of control and may have avoided a hundred more deer accidents because of that. The program is strictly controlled and monitored to keep everyone safe, and there have been, there have not been any incidents at all to adversely affect this program. The hunters have very strict rules, they must have four acres or more, they must have other permits, but you're on a waiting list to get those permits, and no one wants to lose their permit. So rules are adhered to exactly as they should be, or they lose their permit, and they don't want to do that. An interesting side note, with the people being out there and they're hunting and they're in the woods, they're reporting more coyotes being seen, most on the south side of our city. Did you know coyotes were brought here to control deer? They don't. So we have to do something to try and control a growing problem associated with the deer herd. So far, culling is good. The deer are still plentiful for those who enjoy their visits, and I think we all do at one time or another, except when we have our plants eating. We just can't let the situation get out of hand, and we're doing a good job. Now, on the flip side of this, the coyotes are becoming a problem for attacking pets. Keep this in mind if you have a smaller dog or cat, they eat them. I have to keep you informed that our problems with Columbus continue. We've lost between five hundred thousand dollars to a million in cuts they've inflicted upon us to balance their budget at the state level. There's a dark cloud on the horizon called House Bill Five that threatens our most important revenue stream, and that is city income tax. Mayors from all over are converging on our state capital in an effort to keep this ridiculous bill from passing. I've already been to Columbus twice in an effort to lobby against this bill. I am finding a sympathetic ear in our state senator Frank LaRose, keep that in mind. I hope that this, um, if this bill passes, if you wanted to buy a clothes sign and you went to the hardware store, there won't be any left because they'll be hanging up all over Macedonia. We cannot exist without controlling our city income tax. We have the fourth lowest real estate taxes in Summit County, how about them apples? We are the lowest out of all the Nerdonia Hills communities for real estate tax, operating tax. That would all change if HB Five passes. We've pretty much not had an increased real estate operating tax since the early sixties. Our state representative is Christina Rogner. She can be reached at six one four, four six six, eleven seventy-seven, or by emailing Call my office, we'll put it in the messenger, we're going to put it on our, our website. This is a very, very important bill that could be a disaster. I'm asking our law department, Joe, to bring forth legislation for this governing body to ask for a rejection of House Bill Five. It could threaten our ability to serve our residents in the manner that they have come to expect. The mound. The mound is located behind the shopping center where the Great Escape is. It's resurfaced. I don't mean it's come back up to the top, the turmoil over the mound has resurfaced. The mound was to be handled by the developer years ago, and all that was required would have been my signature on an agreement. Because the property is a joint economic development district with Northfield Center, my signing had to have their approval. Their lawyer advised them not to let me sign. Di Bartolo, the owner of the property at that time, retracted their offer to take away the mound. Because my signature was disallowed. The Army Corps of Engineers had some personnel changes, and the issue was dropped. We thought. The sleeping dog has awakened. Now what? We, Joe, Joe's office, went through the time and effort to get this resolved. We had legal fees, my God, it was a year's worth of negotiation by Tom Hansleck that was going to make this disappear. These efforts were thwarted by Northfield Center disallowing the remedy on their legal advisor's advice for reasons Macedonia did not feel were pertinent. This will now be a costly and totally unnecessary expense for a community to bear. I have some thoughts on who ought to bear this cost, and I think you know what that would be. That particular shopping center has some good news... That particular shopping center has some good news though. In the process of allowing a state route break for a right in and right out, still moving forward. I would like to thank ODOT and Chick-fil-A owner, Dan Stanko, for keeping this project moving forward along with Mo Darwish in our engineering department. Dan Stanko's quite a guy. He's taken on the task of organizing the businesses there and is doing a lot behind the scenes to help make this happen. This will be a win-win for the businesses located there and for their customers. It will also make shopping there safer and more convenient. There is a cost involved with this. And Macedonia is not going to be involved in the cost. The road that will be built will be built right by the Great Escape. It will be a dedicated road. What's a dedicated road? A dedicated road means its responsibility will be the city's to manage it, take care of it, plow it, fix it. But it's better that way. So this is a good deal for the shop owners. That's the good news. The bad news is State Route Eight is a limited access highway. Being a limited access highway means that, once upon a time, ODOT came in and paid a lot of money to a lot of people adjacent to that highway. Why? Well, first of all, they have to buy the right of way. That's understandable. But when no one will be able to access that road, they had to give them something a little bit extra. So the cost of buying that privilege back exists. And it will probably be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the stores are going to have to come up with, or the developer, not us. So if this moves forward, it'll be a joint effort between the businesses and this city to make life better and safer for everybody. Moving on now to committee reports. Are there any committee reports tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to mention one thing here. Recently, a resident published something concerning the twenty-two acres. And this involves the R2 zoning case along South Bedford Road, around the hood, streets, and so forth. And what this person alleged was is that there was a secret deal, and this was all done behind closed doors. Well, I got a call from three separate residents who lived in that community, in that area, and who were involved in this. And they were offended by the fact that somebody had accused them of conducting a backdoor deal. And the real problem here is, is that, right now, there's a, in my opinion, a propaganda campaign to make people ignorant. Because, and I asked these people to show up at the council meeting tonight and speak. And you know why they didn't come? They said that they were afraid of being videotaped by this person. Because they felt that they had a right to privacy to speak and ask not that they be videotaped, but they were afraid that they were going to be videotaped and then perhaps photoshopped and edited. And they were concerned about that. I believe people have a right to privacy. And the person who wrote this information has a history of doing this sort of thing to the point where the law director had to write a letter to her and warned her that this is not a proper activity. But I want to point out something about this situation, about these twenty-two acres. And that is, the administration did not approve the court settlement alone. All of council and the residents in the precinct concerned were involved in the process and had approved the settlement. And council was not surprised at all at any time throughout this litigation. They were very much involved when it took place in two thousand six and two thousand seven. And in addition to that, there were no violations of any charter or code provisions. And what's really amazing about this is I hear about all these records requests. And all it would have taken was just to have a conversation with the council clerk and say, how did this happen? And it could have been explained within ten, fifteen minutes, if that. And the records would have been readily available. But instead, someone published something that was just false. And really hurt these people because it put them in a poor light. And a point of fact, on February twenty-eighth, two thousand seven, all of the residents along South Bedford Road and the Pierce Bennett State subdivision, they all received notice of this. And there was a lengthy letter written by our law director, Mr. Dever, which would have been available for viewing and which would have been just given if asked, that would have explained what took place. Everything you read on the internet, we've all learned, is not true. And what's most important here is, if you have a question, it is best to contact the mayor, discuss it with him. And we have other experts in the city who can give out the proper and factual information. And perhaps, I feel sorry for those residents who are concerned about this and who were put in a sad light falsely. And the sad thing about it is, is they were afraid to come here tonight because they thought they were going to be videotaped and they would have been photoshopped. So, Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, we're balancing off privacy interests here over a right of information. And I felt, on behalf of these residents, I had to speak tonight because they asked me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I asked for information on all that stuff, Ken, you know, because I'm on the planning now.
Sure.
And I didn't see the letter to the residents that was...
Oh, yeah, two thousand seven, yeah. I've seen it, maybe it's in the planning commission file.
Yeah, Josephine gave me a whole bunch of stuff on that because I requested it, and I didn't see that.
Council was involved every step of the way. Every step of the way for years.
I definitely heard I didn't get it.
Moving on.
I gave you stuff in the zoning.
Right, and in all the newspaper articles.
Not everything in that, I gave you, in my zoning file.
Okay, well, I didn't, this is the first, I wrote it down. I mean, I didn't know that there was a letter to the residents either.
It's very extensive letters, four-page letters.
All right, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
It's a long letter, but it took me about fifteen minutes to read.
Well, I know, I would like a copy, I would like a copy of it because I have a file going on that project in case something...
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you know...
Will you provide her a copy of this?
Sure. I have a copy.
You know, it's a little bothersome that the administration and council are accused of caving in to a developer. That's a little bit bothersome to me. There was no caving in. Macedonia was on the edge of a fiscal cliff. Mayfield Heights had been sued for thirteen million dollars by a developer. And we're going to tell a developer, I don't think so. I don't think that's going to work. And the fact is that we lived it. We went through it. And we fought for every little scrap we can get. And now somebody sits back and said they caved.
What's even bothersome, Mr. Mayor, is that I was a part of that planning commission. I'm a part of council now. And I got sued personally, my family. I got personally sued because I turned down a developer in this city who wanted to put mini warehouses next to the high school. I got sued for one point three million dollars just for being on planning commission. And you know what? We had to take that case all the way up to the Supreme Court, and we won. So many people here on this council put themselves on the line to protect this community. And then unfortunately, people print things, as you just pointed out, they caved in.
They caved in.
You never caved in, I never caved in. And the whole point is, it gets just really distressing when somebody's goal is not to inform, but to make people more ignorant and to tell falsehoods.
And I remember that meeting, I was there, I spoke against those. There was a recent, there were all kinds of explosive found in Bedford at Forbes and Broadway at the same time. And this guy wanted to put these right next to the school.
Yeah, let me tell you, it is not a pleasant situation to be in your own home and have a sheriff's deputy show up with a packet that thick and say, oh, I have to give this summons to you. You've just been served. And you open it up in front of your family, and you're being sued for one point three million dollars. And your kids are saying, hey, Dad, what's that? And your wife is saying, do we have to worry about this? And then somebody publishes in a newsletter, they caved in. And this person has never served in our community on that capacity.
Any capacity.
Any capacity. They haven't built bridges, they haven't repaired roads. They haven't shepherded the city through one of the worst financial crises that the fell this nation since the Great Depression.
Basically sore loser, I guess. Anyway, let me give a committee report, Ken, on the planning meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, the proposed signage at the Seven-Eleven was discussed. The Seven-Eleven has taken over selling out of the BP station on Highland and Eighth. There was proposed signage discussed for Bob Evans. Bob Evans is going to change their sign, put up a nice new sign. There was proposed replacement signage at Summit Dental and installation of antennas and equipment cabinets on the cell tower at Firestone Lane. All real exciting stuff, but everything went very smoothly. And it's a feather in the planning commission's hat. And I would like to thank Ed and the others that are on our planning commission because we actually received a compliment from one of the people that was going before planning commission stating that Macedonia's planning commission was one of the nicest planning commissions they'd ever been before, and they do this all the time. Are there any other committee reports?
Mr. Mayor, we need to schedule a finance committee meeting. And it's my understanding that we're also having a council work session on Thursday, the twenty-first. And part of that will be dedicated as a finance committee meeting. And the meeting is starting at six-thirty, concluding at eight-thirty.
Maybe if you could remind us of that with the email, Mrs. RC, I'd be appreciative. Are there any other committee reports? Hearing none, let's move on to department. Jim, you're up, you're up first, though.
Thanks, Mayor, Council. Just to let everyone know, the trees on Summer Road, they're starting to take them down. That's between Walgreens and North Valley View Road. They are being cut down by Aspen Tree. The work on Summer Road, so knowing the travel, it is between nine and three. Reason being for the school buses, for people commuting to work, coming home, so they don't have too many backups or problems. I want everybody to understand why we're cutting them down. We're cutting them down because there's a danger of those trees falling on the power lines or into the street. Some of those trees are hollow. And the rest are dead or dying. So that's why we're taking them down, in case anybody wonders. Also, just so you know, cold patch crews are back out on the road since we got a little break from the storms. And to date, we have about twenty tons of cold patch that we have laid down. And telling everybody here, if you see any, let us know, hopefully before you hit it. Just give us a call, and we'll be, we're happy to take care of it for you, okay? Just call the service department, we'll take care of it. That's it, Mayor.
Jim, Jim is one of six finalists out of twenty applicants for our service director position. And Jim is one of the six finalists, and you can see why. Mike?
Jim, you must love pain.
Thank you, Mayor. Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District will be here on March the sixth at seven o'clock. It's an information meeting on the stormwater and the fee credits. It's open to all residents, council. We're going to have information in the messenger and again on the website about this meeting. Frank Greenland will be one of the speakers, and he is the director of that program. In the engineering department, I want to thank everybody for voting for South Bedford Road. It's much needed. We're looking at going for a six-inch in-place recycling and a two-inch overlay. Sidewalks and new signal for South Bedford. We're going to prepare something for council to look at and decide if they want to go that route or not with the sidewalks and actual new signal on Highland and South Bedford. The rec center, it was brought to my attention, as we know, that the rec center lot is looking horrible. There is base failure there, I've explained that to the mayor. I don't believe that that project was ever inspected when the pavement went down. And there is base failure, and we're going to have to do something with the rec center lot. So the mayor had given that to me. I'm going to be asking council for maybe a purchase order to at least explore and get a testing company and to take some core samples to see what the base is, what we have underneath, so that I can analyze it and take a look, get engineering involved, and see what kind of solution we can come to that is most cost-effective without tearing it out, without, you know, major, major repairs. The two thousand and twelve budget for the building department, we had five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars budgeted for two thousand and twelve. We actually ended the year at four hundred and forty-six, so we were under budget by ninety-one thousand dollars. That concludes my report.
Good job, Mike. This is, this is an important point. Nick has been talking a lot, and Angela's been working with Nick in regards to some kind of celebration for our city. We discuss it quite a bit, Nick, in our staff meetings. There is a need, talking about that parking lot, for that to be fixed. Because in the future, all of these ride companies don't want to put their rides on grass. They want to put them on gravel. We have a huge gravel parking lot that would hold the festivities very, very well. The, Jim is able to handle taking care of getting electricity there that we might need because this would be a new direction for us. But it will be imperative that that parking lot be in good shape if we should ever get to a fun fest of some type because then you're going to have that parking lot full.
Yeah, I guess there was some kind of repair that was done by service last year, and Jim and I talked about it. Whatever that repair is, it's not working.
It's not working.
I didn't see it, but I hear it's not.
But it should be in our thoughts to ensure that we can go forward with a celebration. So we need to do this right now. Angela?
Mr. Mayor, let's not call it the Funk Fest, that's very controversial.
All right.
Call it the Cotton Candy Fest.
The Cotton Candy Fest. I like that.
That's a good idea.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone who participated in our second health fair, which was held two weekends ago. We had all of the major hospitals, a lot of local area medical offices, doctors' facilities, pediatric facilities, a lot of free screenings and testings. We had a pretty heavy snow day that day, and we still had a really good turnout. So I thank all of the participants in that fair, and I thank everybody who attended as a patron. We've also had some successful programs lately that we've launched and tried as first-time efforts. We had our daddy-daughter Valentine's Day dance this past Sunday, which was very successful. I don't know if anyone had an opportunity to see some pictures, the newsletter included in this week's paper. If not, you can check those out. We also launched couples massages at the rec center. For those of you who are unaware, that we do offer that service. We had that this past Saturday, and we were booked all day long. So it was, it was very successful.
And remember, they have problems with this in Warren, Ohio.
And upcoming events, I'd just like to remind everybody, and also invite you, that tomorrow night, we have a dive-in movie in our pool. We'll be showing Finding Nemo. Doors open for that at seven PM, the movie will start at seven-thirty. So parents, kids, grandparents, anybody is welcome to attend. You can bring rafts and inner tubes and lounge in the pool. You can bring rafts and inner tubes and lounge in the pool and watch Finding Nemo. So we have that going on tomorrow, and you are all welcome to attend. Thank you.
Good job. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Council asked at the last meeting about the status on the roof, and since Jim DiGlatano didn't report on that, the roof was not under warranty because it was warranted up to, I think, 65 mile-an-hour winds, and they recorded 71 mile-an-hour winds. So we're in the negotiation stages with our insurance company, and, and also Jim's getting a couple quotes with various roof vendors that will also overlap to extend the warranty on it. So the insurance company, I talked to the adjuster, and they're amenable to replacing the roof down at, you know, they have the official report that the wind was exceeding the warranty limits, and they've been easy to work with, and hopefully, because of the weather, they're not expecting to start any kind of repairs until the weather warms up because they have to use a, an emulsion to make sure that the membrane of the roof sticks down there. But also, I just wanna report briefly on the radar. Income tax collections are up for the period of January as compared to last year. We, we're up $343,328, which is 27 percent, but when you break that down, actually, 52 percent of that $343,000 actually comes from net profit of businesses. So it's not so much affecting the individual tax holder. It does affect them. When it does, last year, for period one, the increase is only $50,000 from individuals, which is a good thing because maybe people are earning more money at this time compared to last year because the rate was the same. And also the withholding, which is the employer's wages, that was up during this period, $115,000. So it's significant to see that the withholders and the net profits are generating quite a bit of the actual percentage that we're increasing from the 2012 levels. And again, I'm working with Dave on the finance committee. We'll have some more information for the February 21 meeting that's scheduled. That's all I have.
Thank you. Rob?
No report, Mayor.
Rob Lewis is sitting in for Tim Black. Of course, I mentioned earlier, his son's leaving for Afghanistan, so I think Tim is in, is it Colorado?
Yes, sir, he was in Colorado to see Jesse off for deployment to Afghanistan.
Okay.
With the Army.
All right. Joe?
Yes, Mayor. The day before yesterday, the city was served with a complaint by the Ohio Patrolman's Association against the city. This is filed with the State Employment Relations Board. It requires them to have an investigation, the city to respond, and to present evidence and try and avoid the sanctions that could come down as a result of committing an unfair labor practice in the state of Ohio. The complaint alleges that the city, by and through its agent, councilperson Mike Miller, on at least two occasions in 2013, confronted bargaining unit members, police officers in the city of Macedonia to criticize their activity improperly seek and coerce information and improperly threaten and interfere with the terms and conditions of their work. I'll send copies of this out, and then we will find out as much as we can about the information on it and inform council and the mayor as we go along. That's all.
What type of sanctions are possible?
It could be as little as a cease and desist order, attorney's fees for the Ohio Association, costs, other kinds of sanctions. The Attorney General's Office would prosecute if they thought that there was deliberate violations of the code or if council sanctioned what was done, and the, and the individual would not face any other actions unless the Attorney General referred it to local prosecutors, so it's just the beginning stages. We'll fill you in as we go along.
Is this another time, Mr. Deemer, or is this a thing that we have to take seriously?
I think you have to take it very seriously.
Okay. Now, you, do you represent me?
I represent the city. It's against the city, not you.
Okay, so they're suing, they're, they're not suing the city. What are they doing?
Filed an unfair labor practice complaint with the State Employment Relations Board.
So they complained, all right, and what does the city have to do?
Well, the state will assign an investigator. They will ask for us to respond and give them whatever information the city has.
Okay. What information does the city have?
I don't know. I suppose you could tell us best.
Aren't you gonna ask them what they...
Well, the first thing I would do is have council ask you and get whatever information you have, and then we can go from there and then ask the other side.
I think the first thing we would do is hear what they have to say.
I just told you what they said.
That's all?
Yeah.
That doesn't sound like it.
Such action by a representative of the city constitutes direct dealing and interference with the exercise of the rights guaranteed to police officers under Chapter 4117 of the Ohio Revised Code. Such action is an unfair labor practice, and...
Do you agree with that?
Those things are unfair labor practices.
Do you agree...
What they just said, sure. If you interfere with or try to influence police officers in the performance of their duties, that would be an unfair labor practice, yes.
But wouldn't that be an unfair practice to a citizen of Macedonia? Who employs those officers? Some of them to the tune of over $100,000 a year?
The party against, the party...
Let's have some fun with this.
The party against whom this charge is brought was engaged in or is engaged in unfair labor practices within the meaning of the Ohio Revised Code.
Wouldn't we define that?
I just did.
No, you didn't. You just said unfair labor practice.
Well, I'm not here to argue with you, sir. I'm just informing council.
Are you representing the city?
I'm representing council.
At my expense? 'Cause I'm a taxpayer here, a big one?
Well, they're alleging you to be the perpetrator.
Right.
So if you wanna get your own legal counsel, that's up to you.
I wouldn't have to if you're taking care of it. You're the best.
Thank you.
Because you charge like the best. You must be pretty good.
Thank you.
It sounds like this is probably executive session-type stuff, it sounds like.
When we learn more information about it, yes.
These are, I mean, being part of a public...
But it's public record now, I mean, it, it...
It's been filed, right.
Yeah, the Attorney General's Office and State Employment Relations Board publishes these, so it's public record and...
You know, being a part of a public union, I know how these go, and they're pretty serious things, so...
Yeah.
Great.
Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business?
Ms. Nick.
Yes?
Ms. Nick.
I'm sorry, Nick.
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to mention briefly that the 82 Phase 3 public meeting project was held here at City Hall last night, had a reasonable turnout. All questions and concerns that were posed by the residents that showed up will be addressed formally as the project moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So may I. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming.
Happy Valentine's Day.